Okay, thanks for coming everybody, we'll start the meeting with the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again for coming out, councilwoman and Ferris will not be here tonight, she is on vacation. We'll start with the approval of the agenda, I've got a few changes here. So we're gonna add on a new business number three, possible electric credit. We're gonna add on a new business number four, authorize city administrator and or mayor to sign on behalf of the city to accept state disaster declaration results. Add new business number five, flood recovery task force. Add personnel number three, zoning administrator proposal. Move the engineer's report J2 to the mayor's report B2. Add mayor's report B3, finance director proposal. Add visitor to the council C2, request for forward action summary. Add new business number six, park mower. Add attorney number two, information regarding sewer service lateral noncompliance. Add administrator number four, clarification of building permit fee waiver and remove administrator I3. Does anybody else have anything besides that? Teresa?
I do not.
Dan? Glenn?
No, I think this is punched.
I don't get a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Thanks Lynn, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks Dan, all in favor say that I.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries unanimously Linda. Number two, consent agenda, everything is in your packet, is there any questions for staff on the consent agenda? Okay, does anyone have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thanks Glenn, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks Lonnie, all in favor say that I.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries unanimously. Onto the mayor's report. So keeping with last meeting, just to start, we'll keep with the same theme obviously it rained again between the last meeting and now, so we're just gonna keep addressing this every two weeks I suppose. But first, I just wanna start with thank yous. Thanks to, you know, the last, two weeks ago, we kinda set up an aggressive plan to come up with some solutions. So I know I've been kind of a bulldog on Brandon and some other folks that, you know, we need some solutions and we need some options quick. So appreciation to Brandon, his staff, but if WGS, they've really come through with I think something that's gonna help us out tonight. City hall staff, I know city hall staff who work here take a lot of feedback and it's really not their, anything they do, they just work here and they take a lot of feedback and so for the most part, they've had smiles on their faces through most of that, so we appreciate everybody working through that. Public Works Department, you know, they're called on on a regular basis now. Usually we have one person on call, anytime there's a threat of rain, Charlie's got six people on call like he did Saturday. So appreciate the Public Works Department, if it doesn't rain, it's a pretty big inconvenience to them, but when it did rain, they were there right away, so we do appreciate that very much. All the emergency management people from the county to our own people here in town. You know, Saturday was kinda unique, we had some situations with flooding, but we also had wind and trees that actually went through people's houses. Streets were blocked, so we have two police officers on at any given one time, they can only be in so many places at one time. I know they probably weren't somewhere where somebody wanted them right away, but they were doing the best they could do. An appreciation there. Appreciation to the news media who've been nothing but professional and respectful, knowing that us as council and mayor have other full-time jobs. Anytime we've been contacted, I've always talked to them when I could and they've understood when I couldn't, I'd always get back to them. So I appreciate that as well. And then two visitors we'll have tonight that we'll hear from, Karen and Buffy, who work for SEMCRA, have been very instrumental in a lot of things, looking for some different programs that help. And that's a service to the city that we don't pay for. So they provide that through their organizations and we'll have, hear a couple of their suggestions tonight and things they have for us. But they've been, Karen's texting and emailing me on Friday night and at the gym and wherever else. So appreciate them doing that for us. So we're gonna have some follow-up to what we had two weeks ago here. But again, everything's being taken seriously, we're doing what we can do. And unfortunately, like we said before, there's gonna be some answers that you get that aren't gonna be what you wanna hear. And there's gonna be just answers that you hear, we don't know yet or we're working on it, 'cause some of this stuff just takes some time. So a lot of years have built up, we gotta fix it, some different things, but, and then the other perspective we all have to keep in mind is with this last round of rain, our geology around here can only take so much moisture. And we can design systems to handle certain amounts of moisture, you know, it's just a matter of how big do we wanna design something. So it just, it, we all, I think myself included, sometimes I get all excited and wrapped up in it. Perspective is that it's never been this wet before, ever, in this area. So, so I'm gonna ask Brandon to take over our city engineer. He's put together, we said, we charged him with the task of inflow and infiltration, come up with some solutions that could help us out. And as a council, we will look at that and then hopefully we're gonna make some decisions tonight. Soon as Brandon's done, Nancy has put together how we can actually fund and pay for some of that. So then we'll listen to that as council and then we can discuss the options we saw and hopefully take some action to start out some things right away. So Brandon, it's all yours.
Alright, well, thank you Brandon, council. As the mayor alluded to, we have put together this memorandum, it is in your drop backs in your council package. We're also projecting it tonight so the citizens and the public can see it also. My plan tonight is just walk through this memorandum, it has a lot of action items that we can, as a city, proceed to take forward. Hopefully this is for high-level discussion, we did meet with staff and the mayor last Friday to kinda put the finishing touches on this. This is intended to serve as a planning and a budgeting item to give us again that direction on moving forward in these projects if you choose to see fit. So may I just jump right into it? Obviously, we're all here because we had some sanitary sewer backups. Really, what we are looking for or presenting in this memorandum is strategies that will ultimately help reduce the frequency of those sanitary sewer backups. Ultimately, we're not able to ensure that it'll never back up, we could get more and more rain, obviously this is somewhat unprecedented for the area, we had a large amount of backups and we've experienced a large amount of backups in the past. So that's what we're ultimately looking at doing is to reduce the frequency of those backups. What does this approach generally revolve around? It's what we call in the industry inflow and infiltration. That is ultimately groundwater and rainwater that enters the sanitary sewer and different means to get into the sanitary sewer, but that ultimately overwhelms our sanitary sewer system. We have not designed our sanitary sewer system to take down that much water. To put in a little perspective on how much water we're actually taking in, in large rain events like that, we could be six to eight times more water in our sanitary sewer system than what we're probably experiencing today. So that is ultimately the cause of the problem. What we always look for here, and I showed on the graph, is we know we have to make investments in our public infrastructure to cut down this water, so how do we do that? How do we do that as bang for our buck? And that's what this graph here is intended to show us. Green is more cost-effective, again, dollars that we put into our infrastructure, the more dollars that we'll get out of that investment by reducing the INI. Some pumps, smoke testing and dye testing. Some pumps are on the private side, we have a fair amount of some pumps that are pumped into the sanitary sewer. Smoke and dye testing is a method that we go about, our sanitary sewer manhole, to look to see where they're leaking or have openings that water can get into. And then looking at some manhole repairs, the cashing chimneys, the upper part of those sewer manholes. And then looking at pipe manhole repairs and active leaks. We go and look at all the manholes in the city, determine which ones are actively leaking. And there is some holes that are actively leaking, we know of some of them. Get those repaired, get them sealed up so the sewer is no longer leaking. Manhole barrel and other repairs, pipe repairs, that's for the manhole kinda structure. The deeper we go down, obviously, we're excavating and it costs more. And other pipe repairs, this kind of middle ground there. Upsizing the trunk sewer lines, that's something that we'll talk about later on here, that may be something that we're gonna have to strongly consider. In our case, the trunk line that kinda runs from the old wastewater treatment plant along Maston Creek to the new treatment plant. Enlistations and upsizing wastewater treatment plants, that's generally less cost-effective. And that's something, we actually did here a couple of years ago with the wastewater treatment plant, we put a big, huge, 20 feet deep, 200-foot diameter basin to basically collect the wastewater during high flow events. And we obviously used that on the last flow events. That ultimately, bang for the buck, is not the best way to go about solving this problem. With that said, we have you, right, we had all the water in there anyway, we still have to put it somewhere. So that, just to give you an idea of kinda what the best bang for the buck is, again, starting with the some pumps all the way down to the treatment plants. So with that said, we'll get into kinda the strategies we have here. We have about seven or eight strategies here that we looked at. One of the, one of the issues we have in the engineering world when it comes to your public infrastructure is finding this INI. It's very difficult, this isn't something new to the area, new to cities, new to the aging infrastructure. It's not new to the city of Cassin, Nancy just sent me some reports that were done in the 90s, this has been going on for some time. There's been steps to help reduce INI, but ultimately, it's just a hard kinda nut to crack and there's the proverbial drop in the bucket from everywhere, from all those different sources. Our public manholes, our sanitary sewer lines, our mains on the private side and the private laterals, private foundation drains, private some pumps. We actually had in those last rain event, the actual creek going into a manhole, we had a casting knocked off that contributed a very significant amount of INI. So we're really fighting it from all sides and it's very complex to really get in there and get the sanitary sewer system sealed up. So the first item there is some pump and sewer service lateral inspection program, that's something that the city's done in the past. They went through the citywide comprehensive some pump program in the past. Sanitary sewer lateral inspections, we've been actually completing those. It's part of our recent street upgrades, the third, fourth and fifth project around the old school, the old water tower. That service lateral was completed. So this action item here to discuss is, is a budget of $300,000 to $350,000 to do the city. We didn't get into, do we do, not do newer homes that are likely inspected and not likely to be compliant? Do we put in the level of effort there? We didn't get into that. So if you give us the direction that this is something you wanna consider as a city council moving forward, we'll bring something forward in the engineering agreement, I'll sit down with public works, city staff and really put the devils in the details of what we're actually doing here. So then, one thing to consider here, that there will be additional costs to homeowners. Our sanitary sewer laterals are ultimately owned by the homeowners, any some pumps or foundation drain, past practice was. Those are private entities, private property owners that ultimately have to get their service lateral in compliance. So that's kinda the, the other thing I want the council to be sensitive of is, there is gonna be fixes in here that are gonna be more money than what we're discussing tonight. Again, I won't over this pretty quickly, I won't get into all the details of all these different steps. Again, just looking to give a quick breakdown, discussion with the council to give us some direction. Smoke testing the sanitary sewer, this is relatively kinda cost-effective and can be very effective if we ever get some dry weather. We ultimately put smoke in the sanitary sewer and see where it comes up and see if we have different roof drains and we have manhole castings that will smoke. If smoke can come out, water can get in, so we attack those problems and can ultimately fix them or make recommendations to fix it. You know, we had a, we had an estimate number of $30,000 to $35,000 to do that work. I actually talked, when we talked Friday with Charlie, Charlie was not too keen on that. So again, if, doing that level of effort, 'cause they've done it in the past. So maybe, you know, we might reduce that if we, if we're given the direction to move forward to reuse that scope of work. Manhole inspection program inventory. This ultimately would go to every manhole in the city, or maybe we'd start with the flood-prone manholes. Go manhole to manhole, open them up, look at the castings, look at their probability to take water in. Obviously, along Maston Creek, a flood plain, we're more sensitive to the way that they're sealed up, the shape that they're in. So ultimately, come up with some recommendations on how to seal those sewer manholes up. So we have a, generally a budget number of $50,000 to $60,000 to do that work through the whole city. And again, we've kinda broke that up and if we do the trunk line first and foremost, we can come back maybe with the remainder of the manholes later. Moving on here, televising the public sanitary sewer mains. This was done in the past, this is something that the staff felt was a good idea to move forward to review these sanitary sewer mains. A lot of our old mains are what we call VCP, vegetable clay pipe. You touch them, they crack, they're falling apart. We've had some failures, spot failures in some certain neighborhoods. We've been trying to attack them like the third, fourth and fifth project, to replace them, get them updated, but obviously, we don't have enough money to go around and replace all the sewer lines throughout the town. So by televising, then we can find deficiencies within the sewer pipes, leaking spots, ultimately, some spots that may be backing up also. And then kinda bring back a report and say, here are the problem areas, here's how, how we recommend making investments in the infrastructure moving forward. Repair damaged manhole or remove trees along Maston Creek, that actually has been completed. We've actually went ahead and did that as an emergency repair. There was some erosion along the sanitary sewer line near the railroad truss along Maston Creek there. Actually exposed, one of our sewer manholes knocked the casting off and that manhole was actually taking in some water. So we've actually got that project about 90% completed, just doing one last step to it. Developed sanitary sewer bypass pumping plan, that ultimately, and the next one too, the backflow preventers. I mentioned earlier, getting this INI out of the sewer system is difficult. City's been fighting it, obviously, we're still here to fight it. So with, putting on a realistic hat is, this could happen again, so what do we do? Can we be more efficient in our bypass pumping plan? And what that is, is when the creek comes up, our sewer comes up also, and we're ultimately, the sewer backs up in the basement. So is there a way to pump the sewage out of the system, the collection system, the pipes, before it gets into as many basements as we had last time? Ultimately, knowing that we're gonna be pumping that raw wastewater into the creek, which is, you know, an outfall or a disbenefit of doing that, but it ultimately can, may protect more homes if we're in the situation again. So that's something that we've kinda already been talking internally with public works staff, even looked at the size of the pumps and some costs of some pumps that speak to that additional funding or likely required for some equipment needs. Moving on to backflow preventer program, I think this been, was discussed the last meeting. You know, do we look at having a program? Is that something that the city, I understand in the past, has done a program? Or we allow the citizens to come to city hall and say, come install a backflow preventer on my service lateral? City comes in, hires a contractor, does the work. Could put that on the taxes to the petition and waiver program. I understand it's been done in the past and has minimal success. I will say, the backflow preventers are not the, not the end-all be-all, they're, they still need to be maintained and they still can have other problems, so. And maybe that's a, this is the next one of a public outreach. Do we provide some public outreach documents on flooding, backups, bypass pumping, backflow preventers to remind citizens, whether it's through a water bill, whether it's social media posts, whether it's just posting on the city website to say, if you have a backflow preventer, remember to maintain it every six months, it can cause you other problems if it's not maintained. That's something that was discussed on, at a staff level, is there more public education that we can provide? Last one here, feasibility report and modeling the sanitary sewer trunk line. Again, we have three larger sanitary sewers kinda all come together at the old treatment plant by the railroad bridge along Maston Creek, there where the former wastewater treatment plant was. And ultimately goes into one trunk line that follows Maston Creek all the way down to the wastewater treatment plant. We kinda, I think we're pretty certain that that trunk line is, one, taking in too much water, but maybe being close to undersized, we really can't get our INI under control. So what this would be, would be to really look into that, look in the feasibility report, see if this is something that we should be doing of upsizing this main to convey that water down to the treatment plant to get it there so it's not backing up within our other sanitary sewer and do some modeling there to determine what size that may be. We just had a comp plan that showed a fair amount, go up to the south of town, along the Highway 14 corridor. The more that we develop along that corridor, the more pressure it's gonna put on that sanitary sewer main. So it's, is really a, an upside in the trunk line. What we need to be doing, and it's, is again, something that we should be considering to reduce INI in addition to adding more capacity to our system. So that's the, the quick and the dirty here, I didn't get into too many details, I didn't wanna, and we got a lot of other things to consider tonight, so I didn't wanna spend a couple hours going into all the engineering related to each item. Again, it's more of a high-level discussion to say, where do we go from here? And I wanted the council to digest it a little bit. You know, if you say, well, what's the best project, I think they're all great. We obviously have an INI problem and here's the way to attack it from all the angles that ultimately, you're gonna have to attack it from to really reduce your INI and get that flow out of the sanitary sewer.
Thanks Brandon. So you ranked those on the first page, you know, most effective, dollar bang for your buck. Which single one do you think would take the most INI out of the system, the quickest?
The some pumps, the foundation drains and then the inspection of the trunk line along Maston Creek. I really think that trunk line, especially with the casting that knocked off, I mean, the pipes can't take that sort of water getting in there. And again, it's coming in from multiple angles, it's coming from our manholes leaking, it's also coming in from the some pumps and the foundation drains.
And you were saying on the televising of the public sanitary sewer mains. We have some repaving that'll go on First Street Northeast.
Yep.
Did we talk, I think one of the meetings we had, are we gonna televise that before we repave that?
Yep, and absolutely, consideration later on in the council meeting to proceed with that construction project. And we are gonna do that, we're gonna televise it, we're gonna recommend to proceed with the construction, paving of that street. And then in the meantime, we're gonna televise that.
Before we pave it.
Before we pave it. We have issues and we'll deal with it then.
Okay. Alright, so I've said to this a couple of times, what Brandon sold. Any questions Dan, or comments?
No. We forgot which way to go.
Which?
No.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, so how about we hear from Nancy on how we could possibly pay for some or all of these? And then we can have a discussion on if there's something we wanna add from the year. Obviously, anything that we do, we're using tax care dollars to pay for it, whether it's funds we already have. And that was kind of our goal, was hopefully come up with a way to do some of this stuff immediately or as soon as possible without raising the levy and raising taxes, do it with reserve funds that we already have as we prioritize that way and do it the least amount of tax impact that we can. So Nancy, get your lizard hat on.
Well, the mayor had already asked me to consider this information, so I shared it and with councilwoman Burton. But the projects that you see on the screen are pretty much related to the wastewater or the sewer and the storm funds. So those are the funds we need to look at as available resources. Now, we do have a little bit in our stabilization fund, but if you've been attending our meetings, we have lots of potential uses for that as well. But so, I looked at our funds that were available at the end of last year and then looking at where we might be at with budgets, because we don't spend the same amount of budget every month. So we looked at the entire year, what was budgeted for 2019 and compared those available funds to what the expenses are in wastewater and in storm on a yearly basis. Well, there are no hard and fast rules either about what you keep in the way of reserves. Obviously, you rule of one zero, I can tell you that across all of our utility funds at several points during the last 15 years, several have operated in a deficit. So it's nice to have some healthy fund balances to even be able to be in this position. And that's what the utilities are for, any funds that aren't expanded, we keep in the fund to be able to pay for projects like this or any other capital type of project. So in discussion with mayor and councilmember Burton, we thought, well, maybe a reasonable guideline is if with the funds that we had available, we chose to keep in reserve about six months' worth of expenditures, what kind of balances might we have in those funds to be able to pay for some of these projects? And netting that, we're looking at about $700,000 in sewer and about $100,000 or so in storm. So we have some monies that are available. Now, that doesn't mean something else can happen and we all of a sudden need it. We have a sewer plant where a replacement part can be up to $100,000. This is just a part, but it's that big of a plant. So working with those dollars and using what Brandon had proposed too, and again, he kinda prioritized them, again, the bang for the buck, and using the top dollar proposed in the range. I listed out what the potential cost might be for any of those. Now, the cost that are proposed also might not happen all in one year. Some of these are programs and they're gonna take a year or two or maybe even into a third year to complete the whole process. So we rebuild proportionately as we went along. But we, we have some funds available to make a good start. And then also, I want to remind you, just like Brandon did, that these are for some programs and reviews, like the televising and whatnot, but if we find any, any items that need repair or replacement as we go on the city side, we need to allow funds to be able to pay for that as we find it. Because we don't wanna find something and then just ignore it and walk away, we wanna take care of it, you know, as soon as we know about it too. So the council has some funds that they're able to work with and take a good start at some of these things, to be able to address some of these issues. Any questions about some of that?
That's it.
Yep.
Dan? Good. Thanks Nancy. So I'm just sort out there, so I kinda ranked these, you know, just prior discussion here as far as taking any action. I think the first thing we should do is to continue with the bypass pumping plan. Because no matter what we do and tackle, we aren't gonna fix anything in the next week or two or three weeks if we get another big rain event. So if we get the bypass pumping plan okayed with MPCA, or we need to have that, that you're talking about going down and shooting elevation or where we can get, you know, where would it possibly come in the basements? And then where would that be in the manholes so that we can start the pumping at that, before that point? So it doesn't act as a mess we can.
Correct.
But my opinion is that.
Agreed.
We can do all these other things, but we can't do them in a week. That one, we can probably get done quicker to where we have permission and it's all set up for the guys to do that. With that would come, I think, a couple more, I don't know how many more you guys, which you had to get there, Charlie and Brandon, but how many more bigger pumps would we need? 'Cause I went out Saturday and went from pump to pump and talked to the guys that are doing it. I don't know, it seems like a big pump, but it's not, it wasn't really moving a tremendous amount of water, so.
Yeah, and it's something we actually already talked about with staff, about getting a, Charlie, you're gonna run it. Pump that'd be twice the flow capacity that they currently have, so. And I don't know what that, I don't know if that was like 13,000, you know, for that pump, so it's something we may bring back. If that's the staff recommendation at the next meeting, to potentially purchase that pump, so.
Use a three-inch now, or?
Two, four-inch.
Two, four-inch?
Three inches, maybe, it's a merciful, we're speaking.
So you're looking like at a six-inch?
Correct.
You said that was about how much?
Point over here.
Okay.
You know, like seventeen, eighteen thousand.
Okay, so that was just the first thing off, off my top of my head, as I was into this last couple of days. You know, second one, I think that is not gonna, kinda surprised me as I was ranking them, but after I had a chance to walk some of Maston Creek on Monday night and a couple of our times gone out there, I think the feasibility report on the modeling, that's something we can charge WGS with doing, getting back to us, 'cause that's not gonna be in the overnight project either, get some information back to us at some point in future. So that way, if it is identified that that's something that needs to be done, that's a longer-term project, that's an eight to 10 million dollar deal. We can't just plan for that and do it this fall, it needs to be planned all winter and it's gonna take some time. So I think if we have that feasibility report to know that, hey, this needs to be done or not, or it's not that part of the problem, I think we need to know that sooner or later. So I guess that's my, one of my priorities there. Education, I think any education we can do for everybody, 'cause you know, I did know a few people that did have backflow preventers, but they had no idea that they had to maintain them. And other things that we can do, you can put a bypass hose on here, some pump, and if it's not taking it, you pump it out the window 'cause it's just coming right back into the basket. So I think there's some things we can do for everybody, just some general education and that's kind of the hanging fruit there. Yeah, and in conjunction with the backflow preventer program, you know, kinda tie those two together. At least make that available. And then we get into the nuts and bolts of it, you know, get up into the manhole inspection program, inventory program, $60,000. We've got the cash to do it, we also will find out where the problems are. Maybe there's some little hanging fruit there, 'cause we've only got so many public works people. If we have somebody else that's gonna do that for us, then we can work on fixing them, just get some price back there. And then the some pump and sewer service lateral inspection program. And that's been done before. I guess I would recommend that we ask the engineer and staff to do exactly what you said. A house that was built this March, I don't think we need to go inspect, we can knock some off this price here. And we can determine, you know, 'cause it was, it was custom practice at some period of time in the 70s and 60s to have these things hooked up to the sanitary sewer.
That's correct.
I've learned that in the last three weeks, I did not know that before it was made, so. So I think to come back with a plan on where's our most bang for our buck there. And it's unfortunate, because somebody's probably the third homeowner of this home, there's no fault of their own, but it is, it's just hooked up the wrong way, it just can't, can't be that way. So that's why we do have a petition and a waiver. Anything that will be on the cost of the homeowner, we do have a petition and a waiver program still at the city, which means you can get the work done, city will pay for it, basically put it on your taxes. City will pay for it, basically put it on your taxes, corrupt 15 years of special assessment. So at least then somebody can finance it over the 15 years. There's more details on that, but there is a program to do it so we can get it done, because when I saw the manhole on Saturday, and the amount of water that usually would flow through that or sewer, and then what was actually coming through that, it was amazing. It was like a fire hose was going down through there, and that 12-inch pipe was completely full and just shooting by on first. So that means there's three-quarters of the pipe that just had water coming from multiple locations. So I can see why it gets full and nowhere else to go, so. That's my two cents on that as far as things to start with right away. Televising the public sanitary sewer mains, maybe wait on that for a couple of weeks until we can get some information back on. You know, we inspect the manholes and we find out that we have 100 manholes that we have to replace the cast or whatever, and all that stuff. What's the price tag going to be on that, so we have to be able to pay for any repairs as well. But I think if we get started on these other things, we have a way to pay for them right now without raising any taxes or fees on sewer or store. This is out of reserves, and we still have six months' reserves for expenditures over the next six months, assuming we have no revenue, we still have sewer and water bills being paid, so. That would be my recommendation to council. Anybody else got their opinions or?
Well, I'm almost thinking that some component of televising needs to go part and parcel with the sub-pump inspection program. Particularly Charlie's group may have ideas as to where there's mains that are in trouble and to address, to identify it first, and then to put a plan together as to how we're going to take care of it. We've got to address the problem. So if the problem is one of the mains, they're cracked, and we've got inflow coming through those clay tiles, we've probably got disintegration of clay tiles. I've been told that there's been at least one property in town that was televised that the camera disappeared into a void at the street level. And if that's the case, that's a problem. And Charlie may be aware of that location and to address that as a problem at the same time with the sub-pump.
Do you, I mean, I'm assuming you guys have maps of older parts? I know we've identified first and second. I already said third, fourth, and fifth, so first and second's the next kind of big street reconstruction, utility reconstruction in 2028. Matter of fact, it's going to be done in 2021 when the state replaces the highway. Have we televised those recently, or is that something we could televise to see? You know, I'm kind of on a three-year mark here. Could we televise that, those older portions that we have slated for replacement in the next 10 years? And I'm not trying to kick any cans down the road, but if we could delay the first and second project five years, we might be able to then fit it into our bond structure for the trunk line replacement without raising our debt levy.
Sure.
You know, so maybe there's some targeted televising we can do in places that we've, we should have a map of sometime now. We have everybody who's registered for that list. We just got under 25 today. We turned in their debris receipts that weren't on the list, so now they're on the list. So we should have about 220 homes that we know have backup of some kind of it. If we can map those and say, these are the ones that actually legitimately have sewer versus water, maybe those are the areas that we need to target with television. And if that doesn't make sense, I'll tell you that, buddy.
No, it does, and then just to give, go back to the nuts and bolts of the dollars. We had to televise the entire system, kind of plan in that budget number. And to maybe your point, and we haven't worked out with staff yet, is the newer stuff, this PDC that is less likely to have failures, maybe we just take them off the list and say, let's get a core downtown that has the older pipes, again, to try to get their best bang for the buck and not spend, you know, I hate spending money on planning and engineering that doesn't get the project done.
Well, we don't need to go televise the subdivisions that were just put in the last two to five years, because they were, you know when PDC was supposed to have been used.
Yep. It's going to last 100 years, it should last five, right?
I would hope.
Anything else?
No, I, I just felt that that'd be a little bit higher than priority.
Okay. Dan, anything?
Nope.
Lottie?
No.
I suppose we need a motion, if you can do martial orders to-
I'll just take that as my direction, and we'll be back to the council, engineering agreements and work things out with staff.
Okay.
Which direction we're going.
Okay. And as far as the sanitary bypass pumping plan, we'll consider that staff to move forward with that. Okay, to move forward with that. Because we kind of already have worked something out a little bit, and we, I mean, had a conversation with them that, hey, we're going to pump earlier.
Yep. I'd say it's kind of already half completed, so.
Sure, okay.
And if we're going to bring back equipment needs, our recommendation for public works to purchase certain equipment, we'll bring that to the council, potentially at the next meeting, so.
Okay, and we have three of these. Okay. Thanks again, and I spent some extra time putting on together, and your staff did that, so appreciate that.
No problem.
The next charge I would like to make to WHPS is, this is the sanitary sewer portion of it, you know, it's a scum sewer. We also have a stormwater issue in town with our public waterway that goes through town, Maston Creek, which basically drains 80% of all the water that falls on the earth in Cassin, goes through the creek somehow, some way. Some orderly, some not so orderly. So we've already got the East Main Street Storm Sewer Project that's going to happen this fall. It should help with something in flooding in town. But what I'm interested in is, and we talked about this a little bit, flood mitigation as far as Maston Creek is concerned. So I don't know, you had somebody in your office that that's all they work on?
Yeah.
They could look at something to come back and say, what do we, what could we realistically expect to apply for with the DNR, maybe these flood mitigation funds that are going to become available as far as holding ponds before the water gets in the town, doing something with the creek while it's in town? Are there places in town where we could ask the DNR that we could make it a little bit bigger? I know they don't like that, you know, make it a little bigger to make it-
Flow easier.
Flow easier, to clean it up, because when I walked the other, there's trees hanging over that the next flood, if they're going to be down, it's going to cause damage, it's going to cause property damage. So how do we work with those agencies to come up with a plan to apply for these projects?
Sure. So I have talked about that internally with our staff, and that's actually something we're going to talk tomorrow. We'll meet with Matt Moss and the county disaster declaration and how some of that funding may become available through the declaration, so we're working on that.
Okay.
I think maybe the point or the message in the council is, really to do any flood mitigation is probably not going to be within Maston Creek itself. It's probably going to be holding that water back before it actually gets to the creek, because there's a public water which has very difficult permitting requirements. And so our water industry, they're going to have, they're going to down the creek, it's just not going to happen, so. And there's public water through town, but all things we work out, so.
True.
Of course, true.
Yep. All right. Thanks Brandon. Okay, visitors to the council, Karen.
Good evening, I'm Buffy Baronic, executive director for Centra. Before I get into the first item on the agenda, I'll just note that since you do have money for your sewer and water, just reach out to Karen. She may be able to get you some more grant dollars for some of that and partner some of that up. She also has experience doing flood mitigation, so, yeah. But you can't have her. Can use it, but can't have her. The reason why I'm here tonight is in follow-up to the last time I was here two weeks ago. Karen and I were both here, and we listened to the two hours of stories about what was happening with the flood. We were here simply on a housekeeping item. I'm new to my position, been in it for just over 100 days, and just wanted to make sure we had all the paperwork in place, and we were here to have the city of Cassin re-certified Centra as your HRA. The mayor charged everyone here to go out and look for solutions. So Karen and I, when we left here, we thought about, well, what can the HRA do for you? We do have funds. We have some reserve funds, and we'd like to be able to use that by getting that out to the residents as soon as possible. A lot of the funding that's available doesn't come until later on, and what can we do now and act quickly? So Karen and I, you know, first thought, well, we can levy, we can use the HRA levy capacity. And Karen followed up with the mayor the next day, and came up with an idea on how we could, we came up with a number of $69,500, which was the HRA levy capacity for the city of Cassin. So we're proposing that we utilize about $70,000 of Centra's funds to administer a small loan program up to the residents affected by the flood. Karen will go through that in more detail and answer specific questions. One of the things we brought forward to mayor was, because our board meeting, the Centra board meeting was the following day, we're not going to take this forward to Centra unless you want it to get brought forward. So we did, we took it forward to the Centra board. They unanimously supported use of the HRA funds. Because Dodge County is now a participating member of the HRA, they are actually utilizing some of the county funds to support Centra. We feel that because of the nature of this instance, because they're participating, Centra's going to administer those funds at no administrative cost. So every dollar used will go to benefit a resident. Part of the discussion at the HRA was, again, this all formed around the HRA levy, utilizing the HRA levy. If, there's a maximum levy. If we utilize the HRA levy and the county levies in 2020, then there could be some contention. It could be difficult. We talked about should there be a combination? Then there's also the question of just use of taxpayer dollars. One option that you could use is you could levy a portion of HRA levy and a portion of just your general fund levy to get the money back. Centra's willing to loan it to the city, but the levy would then be used to repay Centra next year. The citizens then would repay those dollars, and that would create a revolving loan fund. If you use your general fund levy, they're technically your dollars, and you could then take those dollars back from Centra when they're repaid, you could use it to offset future levies. So it's being conscientious of the use of taxpayer dollars, you could use that as an offset. If you use the HRA levy for that, that would make me a little bit nervous just to hand it back over to you, because it is specifically an HRA levy, and it should be intended to be used and managed by the HRA. So it's just something to think about in those terms. Karen, do you want to talk about the programs specifically that we're proposing?
Thank you for having us, and we're here to do what we can do to help. So we're proposing a 0% five-year installment loan that Centra would take those payments. We would administer those, collect payments on those, up to $3,000. That would help, you know, water heater, for example, and cleanup, some of the cleanup stuff. Just think as a way to get funding out immediately, we can start doing this tomorrow. That's how easily this could be administered if it was approved tonight. We're looking at restricting the funds to those at 115% of the state meeting income and below. So we have the small cities funds that are 80% county meeting income. There's a lot of red tape since those are federal and state funds. We have the two different posses again, not to confuse you, but one has state requirements, one has federal. So there's a lot of red tape with the federal ones. There is some red tape that we're going through on the state ones. So those are county meeting incomes, so this could help somebody at a higher income level, but we're still restricting it to get it to the neediest residents. And then payments would be, repayments would be deferred for six months after the start of their loan, so it kind of gives them a steady period too, because obviously it's not going to cover everything, but it definitely is a hand up in that sense. And then as Buffy stated, the repayments would be, go into an account restricted specifically for the city of Cassin. We would not do a full third-party income verification on this, as our other programs require. On average, that process takes three weeks alone just to do the income verification, and longer if they do not give their stuff in. So if they're missing one form, we're back to following up. So we would use their tax return to verify income, and then we would always verify ownership through the county. This would be secured through a program mortgage on their property. So the only non, I didn't want to say good instruction, but the only non-beneficial fee would be the recording fee to secure that mortgage. Any questions? One other thing, I'm sorry. We would use receipts or cost estimates, that kind of thing. We're not going to come out and see what they need, we're going to work. Yeah, so we would, they're still obligated to do the repayment on it, so.
Lottie, anything? Nope. Thank you very much. Appreciate you, we're going to, now we got to figure out how we're going to fund it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Nancy, I mean, you briefly had that conversation, did you have a chance to look at that stuff I said?
Well, I looked at it, but then Buffy mentioned so many different ways to go at it, which I wasn't aware of. So I'm not sure I quite understand the details of that and who is administering which fund and where, and just the proprietary nature of some of it, so. I don't know, I mean, it's up to this, I mean, and I don't know too, I mean, I see the resolution to levy funds, does that mean we have to?
No, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong here, so levy is one of the options that's available, but to me, and we've talked about, I said, go ahead and see if we can get approval, we'll bring it up. Probably not my favorite way, because then it does restrict those funds in the future to the HRA, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, because the HRA is possibly going to have some needs in the future. But if we use other funds to fund it, then when the program is paid back, those funds release back to the city without restriction, and we can put those to offset. We could use those funds to help pay for some of the repairs or maybe any of the ones. But the levy would give us, would have more restrictions on the funds if I'm-
If you use the HRA levy, if you just use your general fund levy, so as part of your budgeting process for 2020, you said, okay, yeah, we're just going to increase it by $70,000, and then we'll fund it that way. We'll pay Centra back in July and December. And if it's from your general fund, then I don't feel that there's a restriction on those funds. We could repay those, once the money comes back from the property owner, we could pay those back to the city, and we do the administration.
Well, just to clarify a couple of things though, is what if the city wanted to fund it right now from some other source? Because you keep referring to the levy, you know, if they're already collected, but I understand that they could levy separately for it as well, too.
Yeah, sure, if you had other funds.
If we wanted to use other funds, we could do that. If we wanted to do levy, which got us something, that's not my favorite way to do it. My understanding is you guys would have money available to basically loan the city right away to start the program, and we would pay you back when the levy funds come in next year, but.
Yeah.
I'm going to say, my opinion is, I don't, I'm going to say I don't like the levy part of it, just because of there's more restrictions and it's huge dollars, so that we could take X amount of dollars out of our electric fund, and then as those funds are paid back, it's just going to back in the electric fund.
As I understand it too. And if we wanted to, we could pay for it now, but you're saying any of it wouldn't be repaid till next year anyway, no matter what our source is.
Right, six months.
For a minute.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
Well, I thought that was for the homeowners or deferrals six months.
Yes, homeowners are a deferral six months.
Okay.
If you had the money now, we could administer that program on your behalf now. Okay, here's $100,000, get this money out to the homeowners, we could do that.
And then as those payments came in, starting in six months, that money can be paid back to the city on a regular basis.
We should do that, yeah.
Okay. So that would just be a liability on the debt.
So you have some options for some other funding sources, even electric and stabilization funds?
Yeah, and we do have, thank you very much for carving that. We do have some funds that were in a revolving loan fund with the EDA that were not eligible to be a revolving loan fund.
Right, those though we have-
Those are already-
Committed to small cities development grants, but it also allows to help property owners who are not in the target area. So this does not preclude folks from participating in that program. And those letters will go out shortly.
Yeah. We're just getting through that red sheet, huh?
Okay, perfect. So those are already allocated to that.
And available.
Okay. I hesitate on the stabilization fund, just because there's another agenda item coming up where we have yet another, it's a very expensive lawnmower, blew up, basically it's worthless now. And if it keeps raining and the sun keeps shining, we have to mow pretty much 24/7, so we can't really go without the lawn service right now. So my, again, our electric fund is pretty healthy, and I know we've been tapping it for a lot of different things here and there, but we still have over $2 million. Our electric supervisor is going to be like crazy right now. But I do think, especially with these funds, whatever it would be, and that's assuming that people take advantage of it, and we could make so much available, and it may not all be used and that could be returned, so. I guess that's where I would look at. Allocating some of that, knowing that it's going to be taken back to the electric fund over time. Comfortable with that as the balance?
Yeah.
First, I still look at the balance sheet every day.
Yeah.
And it's over a five-year period, right?
Yeah. It's a messy over a five and a half year period if people take advantage of it right away. away. And the nice thing is, again, thank you, SEMCRA does all the administration of it. They do the application, they do the income, they do everything with it. We're just going to hand them the money, they're going to pay it back to us over time, and we can get it in the hands of citizens right away. So I guess I would like to make the recommendation that we, I guess.
And that was going to be no administrative cost?
Correct.
For that.
I'd throw out that we transfer $100,000 straight away to the program and then see if they're opposed and see what kind of response we have. I've got a few other feelers out right now that I, I don't have enough details back to share, but there may be some other things coming sooner than later, which we'll know in our next meeting. I'll know before that, we can announce before the next meeting if we get the details, but there's a few other things in the works. So I'd recommend that we transfer $100,000 to the electric reserves to SEMCRA for the purpose of doing that. And then you'll work with all the legal documents back and forth with the city for the repayment. Nancy, I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
All in favor, should I?
Aye.
I oppose. Most curious unanimously. Thank you very much. There was another one, too, right?
Yeah. So, in your package, there should be a three-page document, a three-page.
Edit it out.
Oh, you're handing it out. Okay. Karen, can you help?
Edit it in there, electronic package as long as you need one.
No, I don't. The first page is a very detailed explanation of our public housing process for transferring 25 units of our scattered sites to, from public housing to Section 8 project base. Federal subsidy is through HUD. There is no impact to the tenants. They'll still pay 30% of their income. This very long, lengthy document was what I presented to the central board. It explains everything in great detail of the program and why essential to do this. As part of this process, because the city of Casson has three single-family homes in the city of Casson that are public housing, we need to come forward to you and ask for approval to transition those over to the Section 8 project base. And we need to supply with our application a letter that's part of your packet that's signed by Mayor, just saying we approve of the transfer. In there is a flyer, and flyer is a very nice summary of the program. So basically, the benefit to the city is really additional funding that'll come from HUD, which will allow us to maintain these properties at a higher level. Our idea is not to have these properties seen as public housing within any community. So with that, the tax values of the surrounding homes should go up. There is a benefit to Sempra. We will administer these as Section 8, so we'll receive more administrative dollars also. And again, there is no impact to the tenant. They will have to sign a new lease. They do actually get the benefit of, if they decide they want to leave that property and move to the Section 8 from them, they will have a priority on the Section 8 waiting list. So there is some benefit to that. I have to give a same presentation to eight cities. You are the first city that I am giving a presentation to. Any questions?
All for straightforward to me. Stand. Wait. No. Bonnie?
No.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? I agree. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Stand, do I have a second?
No, sir.
All in favor, should I?
Aye.
I oppose. Regent Anderson, do you want me to sign this before you leave?
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a safe trip home. And again, thanks for all you've done on behalf of the community. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We have, let me turn the right place here. Public forum, I've got three people here. First is Doug Buck. Do you want to come to the podium, state your name and address?
Doug Buck, 315th Avenue Northwest. I just want to say thank you to the public work guys there for being out there on our last event and keeping monitoring the manholes before there was a problem. You know, the first couple of our seats pulled, they only had a half a placement. That's what we need. We've got to be ahead of it before it's going to the basement. It's a good job, guys. And the other comments I was going to have, I decided to have with individuals here before I leave, so that's all I want to, thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Appreciate it. Ryan?
Ryan Reitner, 307 First Street Northeast. I like what I'm hearing tonight, when you guys are moving forward. That's what we've got to keep doing as a city. I did put a note on there about, what was it, on Fourth Avenue?
Yeah.
And that was the first rainfall, and we didn't even have two inches of rain. So I don't know if it's hitting First Street and then backing up to the 200 block and coming out of the manhole there.
Okay.
But I just want to say thank you to all you guys, Regent Anderson, thank you to the city guys for being very proactive Saturday. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Matt.
Clark Holtz.
Clark Holtz, live at 210 Fourth Avenue Northeast. Basically, just wanted to represent the 200 block of Fourth Avenue Northeast. Since 2007, the sewer backup has been a considerable issue. 2007, we had 14 inches of sewer in our basement. So since then, we've done anything we could possibly do to keep our basement dry, including check bells and all that fun stuff. I would, I appreciate what's being done now. It's nice to see some forward movement. What I'm frustrated with is this issue's been known since 2007. So anything the council and the city can do to keep moving this forward, please do so. We've put a lot of dollars into our house. We've invested thousands of dollars into our, into our home to make it a comfortable house. And it's, with all this sewer backup, water coming in is one thing, but having a sewer backup into your basement is, is something that's a hard pill to swallow when you've done everything you can to make sure it doesn't happen yet. So I would really appreciate the council and the city moving forward, doing what they Anything you can do to find the root cause of why this is happening. Obviously, final solution's years down the road. Thousands of dollars need to be done to fix the problem long-term. Anything that we can do to find the root cause, where is these large volumes of water coming in? I'd like to hear the plans in place to try to figure that out. If we can do that sooner rather than later, it'd just be very much appreciated. Really, that's the heart of why I wanted to speak tonight, and also just to make sure awareness of that, the 200 block on Fourth Avenue Northeast, that entire block, since 2007, is very susceptible to sewer backups. And I don't know if that's been aware, been made aware, if anybody on that street's been speaking up, but I can count that just about every home in that block has had sewer backups since 2007. So that's really all I got.
Nice part.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Local affairs committee report, planning commission. Okay, it was recommended by planning commission the resolution tonight, zoning map amendment for parcel owners, 11038 Avenue Northwest in Casson. So anybody from the planning commission want to give us a. Why this was recommended? I see here why, but some of it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, Mr. Wilker had applied for a reasonable request to change his current property to an M1 district. For those who aren't familiar, it's along the dump road, not, where, Eighth Avenue. And the discussion, there was, much of this discussion revolved around whether it's compliant with the new comprehensive plan that we've put in place, of which the comprehensive plan has identified that area as future residential and potentially multifamily. So this request is not consistent with what the comprehensive plan is. We did get the city attorney's opinion on that, and because the comprehensive plan is supposed to be the gold standard in which zoning ordinances and things are to be held against, it was recommended that this not be rezoned. What Mr. Wilker had presented as what he wants to do with that property is still consistent with its current zone, and he would just need to apply a new conditional use permit, of which would be addressed, and he could operate his business with a new conditional use permit. So those are the reasons behind it.
Okay, so rezone, no, starts planning is always concerned, but if a new conditional use permit was applied for.
It would be entertaining to have.
Yes. I'm just, I'm just not, you know where I stand on this. I've said it publicly before. You know, we rezoned to allow horses, and I didn't see that in the comprehensive plan, that we were entertaining the idea of banning horses in town. So I just look at a little bit of inconsistency from planning and zoning. I mean, I'm only one vote, so I know where it's going, but.
I can, I can tell.
I just didn't see anything, I read the comprehensive plan again over the weekend in my spare time, and I didn't see four horses that we were trying to entertain before we got the horses out.
No, but the egg district that it was rezoned to was probably the closest zoning district to.
Green space.
To green space, that was in the comprehensive plan. So it was along the same vein and moving in the right direction. In this case, Mr. Wilker has asked to rezone it, I think to an M.
M1.
Which would allow for things like fertilizer plants to be right next to this residential district. And those are the reasons that, in my opinion, the rezonement request should be denied.
Not to argue, but just, so if we did rezonate to M1 and somebody came in and wanted to put a fertilizer plant in, that can still be denied.
No.
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 You would not allow.
You would have to allow it.
That's a permitted use. Okay. I'm just trying to be consistent. If we're going to use the comprehensive plan as our so-called city bible and say that it's not consistent with that, I just didn't see anything consistent with horses.
Well, but the issue with the horses was conditional use permit had absolutely nothing to do with the rezon.
So it's two separate issues. Planning is only, we'll consider conditional use permit. We will welcome it. Okay, that's all I've got. Anybody else?
I would just say, I would just add to that, that it would be, we don't want him to bring an application to reinstate the previous conditional use permit.
It's got to be a new application.
That's, that's.
Okay. Anybody else got anything?
No. I don't.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the resolution that was presented to us.
Someone to approve or disapprove? To approve the denial.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, should I?
Aye.
Oppose? Name, myself. Motion passes three to one. Next, ice arena Dodge County fair agreement.
Captain? Is that me? We've talked about that.
Okay. I had a chance to look at the documents that were sent over, the proposed niche agreement that was drafted by the Agricultural and Mechanical Society. There's, it's not crystal clear the roles that are between Dodge County and the Dodge County Agricultural and Mechanical Society, because it, there's, there are previous agreements with the county that talk about the right of the fair ward to use of the property during the fair. And so what I'm proposing, I don't have, if there's an agreement that's ultimately reached, I don't have a problem with that being memorialized in some way, shape, or form, but I do want it to either reference that 2010, the previous agreement, just so there's not further issues moving forward, where we've got this agreement, now we've got a resolution, we've got this agreement. So if, if the use agreement could either incorporate language referring to that 2010 agreement and saying that, that 2010 agreement is what outlines how the, the cost and the profit are shared between the county and the city. So if we could incorporate something that it doesn't, it's not changing the rest of the terms of that agreement, or somehow referencing those, or even incorporating this use agreement as an addendum to that 2010 agreement, I'm comfortable with it as long as the rest of the terms can be worked out. I understand that there, some of the terms are, haven't been necessarily hammered out yet.
Can you provide us a recommendation on what your application is, so we can get that back with the society?
Yeah. And if it's a short enough agreement, I should be able to put something together and incorporate it.
Yeah, it's time. That'd be awesome. Good with everybody? I'll never remember what you just said.
Sure.
Thank you. We'll table that for the next meeting.
Old business, number one hail damage. So you have the letter in there, what the city buildings that were damaged by hail and what's going to be replaced. Anything to add, Charlie? I was, the adjuster took care of that, but everything's going to come back to it. So there's no action that's required there. Water reports. We had a request at the last meeting, and I did go out and see, visit with Bonnie, who had requested that, you know, did we know the water was safe after the sewer backups? And yes, the water reports came back positive. Our water was tested seven different places every four weeks or something like that, so it came back, it didn't test positive, it tested negative. Tested okay, it was positive, yeah. The water was safe. It was good and good. The water is safe to drink, yes, the water is safe to drink, can't take a shower, sorry.
That's good clarification.
Yeah, thank you. Dodge County Wind LLC agreement.
These are new public meeting days. They're dealing with the Department of Commerce and Heather Public Hearing Days pushed back. So what I had reported to you previously doesn't have changed.
Okay, so new dates are in your packet if you're interested in attending. Park and ride facility.
I think we've come up with a pretty good plan, and that is to post it commuter parking only, and that would take into account anyone who might end up with an overnight shift, anyone who might carpool to a conference, or carpool to the airport, or whatever.
That covers the people that might have a $48 shift or something, it's not.
Right, or a three-day conference and decided to meet in Casson, so carpool up there, whatever. So commuter parking only, and then based on the license plates up there, we could get a pretty good idea.
Sure. Does that truck still park there for like the last month, nine months?
I had noticed right after the meeting that some of the vehicles had moved.
Word travels, that's good.
Like by the next day.
So if that's okay with you, that would be the plan.
That would be great, thank you. Casson capital improvement program, the 2019 update, those are the numbers when Mike and Bonnie was here at the last meeting, and we kind of gave them some direction, and he came back with those numbers. So that's just the results that you had for our capacity and all the funds, so that's there for your information. And for everybody who hasn't, if you go to the city website, there's a packet that has all this information in it, PDF forms, you can see through all the fund documents here.
There's a public copy.
It's a new business, annual safety inspection of rental properties.
So that was a conversation that fed around for a while. It got a little more traction in the last couple of weeks, and the city attorney has recommended that the city council here take a look at Dodge Plinter's rental housing ordinance and see if that's something that you would like to adapt.
Okay.
For you here in the city of Casson.
Just wanted everybody to take a look at that, and maybe at the next meeting, we can add it up for discussion. Any ideas, talk to some rental property owners, maybe.
in the last couple of weeks, and the city attorney has recommended that the city council here take a look at Dodge winter rental housing ordinance, and see if that's something that you would like to adapt for you here in the city of Casson.
Just wanted everybody to take a look at that, and maybe at the next meeting we can add it up for discussion. Any ideas, talk to some rental property owners maybe. Number two, alert system is one of the things that we had as an action item after the last meeting, dealing with the flooding and the different things that went on, of how to get information to people timely, immediately as possible, so Teresa went and looked for something, someone else can tell us something about that.
Sure, well, I was aware that Houston County, Minnesota, had implemented what they referred to as reverse 911. So when they're with some kind of emergency, it would call out to people who have registered their home phone or their cell phone, or it would email a computer or payment text, you know, there were a number of things. And so I went to Houston County's website, they have a page where folks can go on and register in all of the ways that they want to be informed if something is happening in the city. I did call and talk with the folks with the Code Red program, which is what's behind Houston's system, and also the city of Rochester has something that they call an alert system, and this is the program that's actually behind their alert system as well. And it turns out Dodge County does subscribe with this program, and our pricing would be a discounted price based upon fact that they're already utilizing it. It can also be used for things like just letting folks know, yep, we know there's a power outage in northwest. Yep, they registered their phone to find out when there's a power outage, so. So we can use it in a number of ways, as long as folks, we start with a database, that's as perfect as they can get it for how to reach people in our geographic area, and then folks can go online and tweak that or perfect it to how they want it to be done.
But to establish that database, it requires the constituent to apply and get the...
Well, we get a base, we get a basic database provided to us with the program. To perfect it, they might go on and say, yeah, I know you chose my home phone, but I'd like to have it go to my cell phone or touch me or whatever, they can perfect it.
Okay. How about on that one there, we need to see what scope we wanna use it in, if we wanna use it for a power outage, just like we talked the other day, sometimes it's nice to get some of the calls coming in so you can pinpoint where things are. You know, it might, may or may not be a time to do that, but hey, power's out in town, we know it, it's out everywhere, you know, that might be the time, but I'm not pinpoint ones that I still get. So how about we kick this, when do you guys meet again for emergency services? It's August, hang on. So how about we have emergency services take a look at this with the fire chief, see how they would like, if there's a possibility of integrating for fire and police emergencies. We know how we could use it for the city, flood, tornado, sebocas, everything, the next block that comes, sebocas or...
What is it?
September fourth, skipped a month, okay.
Okay.
That's a work in progress, but we'll probably have to, you know, it's a lower dollar amount, we'll probably wanna work that into our budget somewhere for 2020 and start it in 2020, because we're really making Nancy nervous here with all these extra dollars, they should work few on us or something else. So, okay, the next one, speaking of money, possible electric credit. So this is just something that I had been thinking about, and it was brought up at our last meeting. You know, with the flooding and the backup and stuff that went on, there's a lot of folks who have a lot of dehumidifiers, fans, extra electricity that they use, and there's not a lot we can do as a city to pay for, but just like the debris pickup that we did, is something that we could possibly entertain for the 225 people on the list, and I think we have to limit it, you know, we've got the word out in every means possible over the last month, three and a half, if you had damage related to the flood or backup, get on the list. We have to limit it somewhere, and that's why we ask people to get on that list. So I would say if we did anything, it'd be limited to this, we could look at last year's bill, this year's bill, credit the difference, we could do a flat dollar amount to each person on the list. I'm open to ideas, suggestions, to that, I think it would be a good thing, especially for those folks who have the backup, I mean, it's a small amount, but it still could actually be not so small. Could we at least look at the difference, have it reported back?
Maybe we could test, could we do a test of the difference?
Yes, just to test, we can see what the dollar... That bill's gonna be built tomorrow for that period, correct?
Yes, but, so we really couldn't do it for this month.
Right, right.
We can do it for next, but we'll have the information to look at.
Right, so after tomorrow's bill comes out, we'd be able to pull those 225 people and look at what it was last year, this year, see what the differences, so we know the dollar amount we're looking at, and see where we could get that money from.
Or, I guess just to, you know, we'll do a sample, and see how much time it takes to, you know, compare, and then if it turns out it's more cost-effective to give people a credit than make a hundred, two hundred preparations.
Sure. So we could get...
Yeah, we'll do a sample and see how...
Because I know you'll have other people in town too that have used extra during that same period.
For pumping, kept up for having any damage.
So we never think about that. And we did experience one of the hottest weeks in years during that same type of period, so air conditioners were around, so. When did you look at last year's weather and...
So anyway, I'd like to know the information at least next meeting that we can determine.
Yeah, cool.
If we're gonna do anything, if we do, whatever it looks like.
So basically, a limit to the left, but we'll do a sample at least to get a...
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is authorize city administrator and/or mayor to sign on behalf of the city to accept state disaster declaration results. So tomorrow morning, Matt Moss is gonna be here to prep with, I think, are you attending? I mean, Charlie and Teresa and Brandon to, this is for the public infrastructure of the city of Casson, whether it's streets, bridges, creek banks, manhole covers, seeing the damage that we have because of the flood. So we have to certify all that stuff, get it all approved, they're gonna come down from the state next week, meet with everybody again from the state, listen to, hey, here's what we had for damage, they'll come drive around, look at it, inspect it, and then they're gonna go think about it for a week or two. They'll come back down to state, we'll come back down to the meeting and say, okay, city of Casson, you here? Yep, you're here, here's what we say the damages are that were approved for it, here's your funding to fix that public infrastructure, they'll reimburse up a percentage of what it costs to fix, and somebody from the city of Casson has to sign the document at that meeting. So it'll probably happen before our next council meeting, so I'm just asking to authorize whoever the city administrator would be at the time, and/or myself, to sign on behalf of the city. There's really no negotiation or number we can change there, whatever they say it is, that's just what it's gonna be, and we have to take it. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So move it. I'll second that.
Stand in your discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Number five, that was added to your packet, too, I got an email from Matt Moss.
I believe that's correct.
H5.
Yeah, H5. So he sent something out to all the different agencies in the area, municipalities, whether it be township, county, cities in Dodge County that were affected by the flood, and this is gonna be a task force that he wants to put together, a committee that will look at the long-range flood mitigation, whatever it might be, and how it exists and how everything was impacted. And he's looking to have our jurisdiction appoint representatives to serve on the committee, and I'm supposed to get back to him with an email, phone number and address, so...
I would suggest either Lonnie or I, as members of the planning commission, be at least considered for that. And I don't know how Lonnie feels, but I vote here.
Me too.
Close enough, I'm just glad you didn't say me.
No, that'd be, that'd be great, I think that's one of the things too, where you'd probably pick Brandon, Brandon, Charlie, Brandon, see where it goes, so. Thank you. Everybody good with that? Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint. Dwayne is our representative for the city of Casson in the flood recovery task force.
And Lonnie is backup.
And Lonnie is backup. So the second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Six, we added a park mower, which is our second large, very expensive lawnmower to be destroyed in the last month. I guess the engine completely blew out, it's not fixable. So we need to replace it as soon as possible, renting it, because you sell them, it was like six or seven thousand for the rest of the year, buying it was more than that, but I think it makes sense to purchase it, we have money in the stabilization fund, so I'll make...
Is this age of the machine, or is it something else?
It was their own.
Old issue.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the new park mower out of the stabilization fund.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Ministers report Highway 14 corridor analysis and design concepts project.
So the city was invited to participate in the project advisory committee for future Highway 14 design concept. I did put up a survey on Facebook that was provided to me by the folks from Mindott, so there's an opportunity for any Casson residents to let them know how they utilize Highway 14. So the project does not come all the way to our interchange here, there are folks who use 14 and access it at other points where they exit it at points that are along that corridor. So folks should feel free to go online and fill out the survey and let them know how they're using Highway 14. Guy Colenhopper and I sat with a representative from Mindott for another hour after that meeting to talk to them about what we feel the impact of taping 16th Street Northeast will be on the intersection of the county line road. Yeah, because they had some turning counts there, and we just asked them to go back and look at the traffic count at the school, and take that into account when they're thinking about what's gonna happen in the future. And then, let's see, so the next project advisory committee meeting is September 24th, I think I shared that, did I share that with you, Brandon?
Yep.
Excellent. And then October 10th will be an open house, they have not chosen a location or a time for that yet, but I'm sure there'll be more information after the September 24th meeting. So the open house would be any member of the public who utilizes the corridor.
Thanks, Teresa. Dodge County Fairgrounds proposal.
I'm gonna let Jerry, I'll talk to you about the conversations he's been having.
Jared Nelson, Dodge County Fair Board approached us, they've been having a problem for a few years apparently, Scott Higgins, the state electrical inspector, said that they have vendors, portable vendors that are too close to the power lines according to the National Electric Safety Code. There's a few ways to solve it, easiest one being move everything 15 feet away from the power lines, cost to taxpayers of the Dodge County or Casson upping. Their solution was to put all our power lines underground, the three-phase west feeder, seven poles starting behind Houston's all the way to the stack corner. I contacted Steve Cook, our engineer, he gave us a proposal for the engineering alone that could, is not to exceed $10,000. I didn't want to offer too many opinion comments on it. Basically, the rule is they can't have anything 15 feet from the outside of the electric line all the way to the height of the line. So when they roll up some of these food vendors and throw flags on the top, even though there's still 20 people in the line, they need to have that square, so they can move some of the stuff. We could relocate the line, the particular section they want relocated is seven poles to the west feeder, which feeds approximately half of Casson, including downtown, it is not a small project, it is something that would be done in stages, it's a big project. So I think right now they were just looking for a plan to satisfy the inspector that they were doing something.
And they're gonna pay for it?
That requires a lot of further discussion there, they were hoping we wouldn't.
Okay.
So, any other questions?
So what, I mean, is this something that they are looking for us to give them an answer back, say, yeah, here we're on board, or what's the next step on this?
From what I heard, this has been an ongoing, it's been brought up to them, they haven't shut the fair down yet for years. Last year they got a stern warning, this year they have a plan in place, or at least looking at it in order to get the fair going this year. I don't think they were looking for, yes, this is gonna happen now, I gave Teresa the information that Steve Cook gave us just for the engineering proposal alone. My opinion in the electric department, it doesn't benefit us to put that three-phase underground. It's clear of trees, it's not in danger of falling down or being knocked down, you know, outside of an extreme weather event, tornado, it's a lot of money, as far as Casson paying for it.
Any idea how much money, when you say a lot of money, are you talking half a million?
You're talking... Into the hundreds of thousands by the time we're done, sure. Yeah, I, an alternate proposal besides just moving the stuff 15 feet outside of where they are.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why can't they just rearrange their...
They didn't wanna move anything, any amount off of what it's been before.
Wow, they got the paper there, right now if you move it off the grass, you'd wait and these hip waders go there.
I walked it, the stuff, the stuff that's running along, and an alternate proposal I had, and I worked up some quick numbers, it'd be about $7,000 if we relocated the line that goes two spans towards the fairgrounds. It's all on the primary metering side, we would put that underground about 50 feet, put a transformer at the bottom, Kurt Minor, the county fair board's new electrician, would bring all the secondary services to it. Cost of materials with a quick estimate is gonna be about $7,000, and that includes the labor of the two attorneys and of myself, and it could be done really quickly. They would have to move things then, where they have that little clamshell, that inflatable clamshell, would have to move back into that four feet from where it was this year to satisfy it. And then all those vendors that are going down, those food vendors that are going down, all that would be underground, so they'd have to get 15 feet outside of the main line that's running north and south, the furthest line out of the three phases on the top, and they could run them all the way down there, we could put additional outlets along that back, along the fairgrounds, or, excuse me, the racetrack, put the food vendors down there.
So could you put some of this in writing? Yeah, it's kind of a, here, you know, they're gonna come to us at some point and say, we need to do this, we need to pay for it, and then we can say, well, here's a couple alternatives back that are much more cost-effective if we were... We wanna work with the fair, we like the fair in town, it's good for the community.
Yep.
But at the end of the day, a $200,000 project, when really, like you said, power's half the cash, and there's a lot of risk of that.
If there was a lot of trees, or it was a really old line and needed to get replaced anyways, it's more expensive to put it underground, but that would be the time to do it, in this case, looking at the poles and everything, it's not in danger of anything, so it isn't entirely for that fair.
One of the priorities in town is where, there's a few poles that probably should be taken down and gone and up.
Right, sure.
So if you would mind, just kind of, you know, what would be some alternatives, you know, instead of just saying, no, we're not interested, just a couple ideas that might rearrange some things, but we could do it more cost-effectively within our budget.
Would you like me to address it to you guys, as far as the options for Dodge County Fair Board?
Why don't you address it to the city council and provide a copy to the city attorney, she could maybe keep that in mind when she's reviewing what they are asking of us in regarding Ice Arena, so we'll complicate your job further, and send you some additional information. Okay.
Excellent. Thanks, Jared. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, we move number three, four, clarification of building permit fee waiver.
This was a discussion at a previous meeting, waiving building permit fees. So I do have an example for you of a $10,000 basement improvement finishing project that came in earlier this year before the flooding. That permit was just under $500 for that permit. I have effectively 200 addresses, times $500, which is quite a bit of money in waiving building permit fees. So that includes the permit fee, the plan check fee, and the surcharge to the state. So this is just to put like some dollars to it and be aware of what it is that you're committing to with waiving the building permit fees, and if it is in your intention, to waive all three.
I think that was the intention.
Okay.
And we've already...
You turned that? Yep, okay, all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Engineers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You may remember, last council meeting, we had a discussion about our 2019 pavement maintenance project that was proposed, so we kinda kicked the candle at this next council meeting, so we gave it to Public Works and talked about some things. And the question was all around, the frequent flooding that we had, the most recent flooding we've had, along First Street northeast, then also Eighth Avenue northeast. But pavement's in pretty poor condition. We're proposing to grind it up and repave it. Obviously, it's a significant investment. So the question at the time was, well, if we have a sewer line problem, do we want to be investing in the, in the pavement? So went back to Public Works and said, well, we're pretty sure we're not, but we will televise these lines before we move forward with the paving project. So if we approve the resolution tonight to move forward with entering a contract with the contractor, we'll complete that work before we actually do the, the repaving there. And if, you know, if we do have some issues there, then we'll adjust with the contractor in the field, find some different streets that we need to pave, or pave. So again, that's on First Street northeast, Eighth Avenue northeast, and then there's some curb we gotta replace, not on Sixteenth Street, in preparation for a, a chip ceiling and striping of Sixteenth Street. So there's a resolution for you to consider. Turned in a contract with Swinkie Iams Construction, authorized the mayor and the city administrator to enter into that contract, and this is a budget item through our typical street maintenance budget item. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Brandon. This is the exact same thing we had last meeting. We mentioned Brandon's plans again, so appreciate it, having the patience for that.
No problem.
But, and tell me, I just think it's a good idea, so.
Great idea.
Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Dan, I'll, I'll second it. Thanks, Lonnie. All in favor?
Aye.
All in, motion carries. That's it.
Thanks, Brandon.
Appreciate it. All, all the work you put in the last two weeks, and putting up with my phone calls and emails, even if they were silly ideas.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Personnel, proposal from David Dron and Associates. So last meeting, we accepted Administrator Coleman's resignation, so this will be her last meeting, and again, best of luck in your next endeavor, and I appreciate your service from the city. Thanks for coming. So moving on to the next chapter in the city of Casson, as far as administrators. So I had put together an outline last time, as far as our personnel committee leading the search and doing that type of thing. After talking with Dwayne, and after doing some pondering myself that next couple days, I, I think, for lack of better terms, I think we should do it the most professional way that we can. Sure, we could do it, but I think to give ourselves the best chance to find the best candidates, to have somebody that does this on a daily basis, is all they do. So I, I reached out to David Dron and Associates, and they got back to us with the proposals in your packet. They take care of most all the work. They'll come down, interview staff, they'll interview us, they'll put together a job description based on what they get back. They'll, they'll let us know salary package, you know, just help us with all the information they have as professionals in this field. So I'm bringing that forward, that if the council as a whole says, no, we really want you and Dwayne to do it, fine, Dwayne and I'll do it. But I, I would strongly urge you to consider hiring the professionals to do this. Not speaking to it, because Dwayne I know. Are there any questions on that at all? I mean, they're very specific. There was a example in there, I believe, from on a video or somewhere, they've done a job description and that. So they're very thorough. They wanna come down and meet with department heads, city employees, city hall staff, council, to get everything ready to go out. They've got a pretty rigid timeline. They'll get us back the best four to six candidates that we can actually physically interview. One step in the interview, as you see, they'll have everybody do a video interview, that they will then get to us. They'll do the video on a Thursday or Friday, she was telling me, and they would actually forward us that by email. We could watch those video interviews over the phone, over our weekends, preparing for the meeting. So when we come to the meeting, we can have a discussion on, hey, who should our final four or six be? So pretty progressive, and I think they're gonna get the, we're out there, they're looking for three or four other city administrators right now. So they've got pools of candidates that they've already got, kinda, you know, that they have their ear, that they know are looking for new positions, or new places. So I'll stop talking on that. Are there any questions on that at all?
Did, did I read, in there was like a twenty-four month?
They'll come back in twelve, within twelve to twenty-four months, they'll do a follow-up with the new city administrator, to just see that everything's going well. So it's part of the proposal, they do a follow-up.
Is something of, it's a new one didn't make it for twenty-four months, or something changed?
Yeah, there's, there's clauses in there for helping it to be a discount for the next half.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to verify, and I read a complaint, and I was looking for it.
Yep.
I think it's a good idea, just one question. The fee, do we, is that just gonna come out of, where is it, is it like, now that we're not gonna pay an administrator for the next two months?
That's correct.
We'll use that money for it?
Okay.
That was all it was.
Yep.
Or the portion we've got.
Portion, yeah. It's not gonna be the whole amount.
Right.
So it won't cover anything else that we've got going on in that, from that, we're not paying someone to do the position.
Right.
We're basically paying to find the position, but it should come out to less than what we're paying for the other, another supplement.
I like it. I think it's a good idea. I think it's gonna be...
Perfect. Lonnie, anything? Okay with you? I'll entertain a motion to approve hiring David Dron and Associates' HR to take this task on for us.
I would make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimously. Which leads us into number two, interim city administrator. So, let me get my papers here. So our city ordinance says that, I'll figure it out, the section, this is thirty, I have missing, yes. In the absence of the city administrator from the municipality, or upon disability, the finance director shall also act as deputy city administrator to serve during the absence. While acting as deputies, the administrator, the finance director may discharge any of the duties of the city administrator provided by Minnesota statute four twelve, as may be amended at a time. So basically, the city, the statute's pretty rigid there, it says she shall, or, you know, shall. But we had a conversation, and Nancy reached out, and Dwayne and I met with her yesterday morning, early. Nancy has graciously, if we had, was asked her to do that as a council, she would take that, those duties on till we found the new administrator. And Dwayne and I, in our conversations with Nancy, we feel that it's fair that if she's gonna do the city administrator's position, as well as the finance director's position, there's some extra time that's involved there, that she should get, or pay should be adjusted to what the city administrator would be at the entry level position for a city administrator on our scale, which is level twenty. So that's what we came up with there. That's what actually, you know, Nancy said she would agree to do. She's done it before. Hopefully, this time it'll be for a much shorter period of time. And that's just in the best interest. I think using this professional firm, we're, we're gonna be able to accomplish that.
Yes.
And that's in everybody's best interest. So are there any questions for Nancy, or Nancy, do you have any questions for the council?
No.
Okay, so this is piece one, of replacing the current city administrator slash zoning administrator. So I guess I would make the motion that we appoint Nancy as our interim city administrator, until a new city administrator is hired.
I'll second it. With, with the increase of...
With the increase, step one.
Thank you. I wanna make sure that was in there.
Level twenty, step one.
Level one, step one. Okay, so we have a motion, level twenty, step one, city administrator. Second, I...
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, passes. Our city administrator currently is also our zoning administrator. So in conversations with Nancy on this particular subject, there's only so much somebody can do in the day, and then we all have our capabilities and what we're comfortable with doing. So there are certain things that, as we talk to Nancy, we, and by our ordinance, also there's another ordinance that won't bore you by reading it, we have to have an actual named zoning administrator according to our ordinance. So I would propose, as we talked yesterday, Dwayne and I against personnel committee, that we appoint Nancy also as the zoning administrator. And, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, Nancy, you said there are certain things you can do that are, you know, that we can handle in-house, but then there's certain things that might come up that we need more expertise on, from the zoning side.
Mm-hmm.
And you have in the packet also, which was added, I reached out to Brad Chive, who did our comprehensive plan, and their firm offers zoning administrator services. So they had a proposal in there of what they do for cities when they are the zoning administrator. And he said, we can alter this however we want, and get back to them about what service we want. And after talking with Nancy, you know, she's comfortable with, you know, some of the basic stuff, the things that just come in with, Linda, we can do some things, but then if there's a time that we need to reach out to someone for that help, we can then engage them with their services at the rates that they have in there, it's hourly rates. The way the proposal read was, they would set up an eight hundred number, and then anybody in Casson has a zoning question, if you call that eight hundred number, they take care of it, get back to us and send us a bill. I think we're just opening ourselves up to a lot of phone calls that probably aren't necessary, that could just be, hey, I need a copy of a plaque, or whatever, that we don't need to pay a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour for that. So if that sounds okay with everybody, we can get back with Brad and say, hey, we've got a zoning administrator, who will then reach out to them for those services when we need it.
Yeah.
Does that sound...
Yep.
...we talked about? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Okay. So I would like to make the motion that we appoint Nancy as the zoning administrator, and approve the zoning administrative proposal as amended by what our needs are for poison and poever to offer those services.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Post, passes.
Before we move on, part, one of the things that came out of our discussion was, with Nancy stepping into this role, what would happen if Nancy couldn't fulfill the job because she was injured or something? So...
I got that today.
You got that today. Okay.
Fill me in. So, yeah, so thank you for reminding me, 'cause I did it right in my notes. So we kinda went, Nancy's suggestion was, you know, we need to go by points. So all the things not familiar, you accumulate points by your steps and however you've been here. And the next person with the most steps as a city employee is the police chief. And I talked to him today, and he is going to be the, the backup person if needed. Because there is a week in October where Nancy's gonna be out of town on a pre-scheduled thing, which she needs to go to. And he's going to be around that week, and he said he's available to do it. If he wouldn't have been...
Charlie's on the...
Charlie can tell you stories.
So we, we do have, the police chief has agreed to be that kinda backup person in, in Nancy's absence, or if she will, you know, not be here for some reason. So that is covered too.
Yeah. Should we get some sort of a structure built that outlines that, so?
I'll just have something official.
Yep.
Okay.
You wanna get that for the next meeting, or just?
Don't get sick for the next meeting. Either Nancy does it, or we ask David Dron to do it as part of that search.
Well, that's true.
Sure, update that.
You gotta see if they have anything.
Yep, sure.
Okay.
Okay, we'll pursue that for the next one. Thank you very much. Attorney.
In your packet is a escrow agreement for Prairie Village fourth addition. It is very, very similar to the last one that you approved at the last meeting. This is for a, another portion of the same project. They're using two different lenders for, for the project, so this is an escrow agreement for that second lender. Same terms and conditions, just the different lender.
So the thirteen townhomes are with one bank, and the nine taddy homes are with another bank.
Any questions on that?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thanks, Lonnie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, carries, and information regarding sewer service lateral nine in place.
You had asked, or someone had asked me, could we...
I did.
Okay, you did. Could we provide the names of the folks who are asked to comply with subdrain and foundation drain requirements, and had not? And my initial concern was, well, it's water and sewer customers maybe, but there also are electric customers. I just wanted to, your attorney, to address that and assure us that we aren't getting into a very area of what is public data and what is protected data.
So here's my thought process behind that. In the past, the city's done things, and we've asked people to change things, and they just don't do it. And then a new administration comes in, whatever, and it's supposed to be a fine, it never happens. So my thought is, is that if we go into somebody and say, hey, you're hooked up illegally, somehow build into our enforcement phase of that, or the punishment phase, for lack of a better word, that we'll give you X amount of days to come up with a plan, or hire a contractor to do it. Don't necessarily have to have the work done yet, but then a reasonable amount of time to get the work done. If you just don't do it, because you just don't plan on doing it, because it's never been enforced before, we should be able to make the list of that, those people public. And I think we have two hundred and twenty-five people that are gonna go knock on their door and say, please fix your problem, quit setting out to my basement. Is there any way we can put teeth in some kind of the punishment phase to say, hey, do it, there's a penalty monetarily, and we're gonna let everybody know that you're not doing it?
Wait, I, and I believe that the ordinance does allow for a monetary penalty in the form of criminal prosecution. And I did look at the, what is considered public data, and code violation records pertaining to a particular property, kept by the city, charged with the responsibility for enforcing city health, housing, building, fire prevention or housing maintenance codes are public data.
We could if we chose to.
I think you could if you chose to.
Right. So I wanted to just, could we if we wanted to? Not that we would, or, but it depends on how big the issue becomes.
Right.
We have that in our back doctor if we want to.
Yeah.
I'll just add one little clarification, so we're totally clear. So the city ordinance already has a, I think it's a hundred dollars per month surcharge if they do not comply to a non-conformist letter. And we have that for the third, fourth and fifth project. It's already been in place, and already have a practice from the city on past projects. One of the things we'll do if we move forward with the some pumping lateral program, is discuss that and see is it right, we can do some different timelines for non-compliance timeline, to make, be in compliance, some sort of things. And then it might come back to, here's a list of people that were not compliant, council approves, you know, quasi-public at that time, because we're in a discussion of public meetings, so.
Yeah, I'm trying to be, you know, you don't wanna be unreasonable. I mean, if you came into my house and saw, oh, boy, it's not hooked up right, I mean, you can't say, hey, by the end of the week, you have to have this fixed. Hey, by this period of time, have a contractor identify it, and then have the work done within six months. I mean, just give them plenty of time, but it's gotta be done. We can't keep spending money on these programs, and then it just doesn't get done, and kinda gets forgotten about, and we still have the same problem. So those are things that work, work out moving forward. With some program.
Yep.
Thank you on that.
Appreciate it.
Correspondents, stuff in your packet. Any questions on correspondence? Okay. Thanks again, Teresa.
You're welcome.
For all the...
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll send a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
And, do I have a second?
Second.
Dwayne, all in favor?
Aye.
All in, post. You're in for a quarter month.
Yeah, I know.
I'm a paid provider.
It'll be colonial.